Good morning. We're going to call the Scott County Board of Commissioners meeting for April 18th, 2022, 23 to order. Please rise for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands.
Okay, good morning again for April 18th, 2023. This is the Scott County Board of Commissioners. I didn't see any amendments to the agenda today, so we will have the agenda as it is written here. You all received the minutes in your packages. Are there any additions, deletions, or corrections?
Mr. Chairman of approval for the minutes?
There's a motion to approve. Is there a second? And there is a second. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Recognition of interested citizens, limited to five minutes per person or subject. If you'd like to speak, come on up to the podium and let us know what you think. Is there anybody out there for the five minutes? Anybody? Anybody? Okay. Seeing nobody, we will move to number five, and that is to receive information on Scott County delivers topic, Emergency Management, and I see Chris Harders here to kick that off. Good morning.
We have, I think, an impressive group of partners from both the county and our community, so we're excited to talk about that today. Just a couple pieces. We have spent much time over the last couple of years talking about emergency responses to the public health part of emergency management. And so it was with some strategy that we decided today not to include public health, so I just wanted to recognize those partnerships continue to exist and operate effectively. This was just an opportunity to respond and to speak to some of the work that is not specific to public health but is more law enforcement specific. So that's, I just wanted you to understand why public health wasn't here today. I'd like to ask the folks at the tables to hit the buttons on their microphones. People on this side of the table, if you could introduce yourselves and what department you work with. And then Scott, if you would start introductions on the panel, we'd ask you just to say who you are and what you work for, and then we'll get going. Thank you.
Harptown Health and Human Services.
Chris Logge, Community Services.
Kate To Logic, Environmental Services.
See if we can get feedback. All right, and Scott, I'm the Director of Emergency Management and 911 Communications, and I'm going to mute this.
Okay.
There you go.
Kurt Fodrick, Shocking Meadow, Wakan and Sioux Community Emergency Manager.
Haley Heidelberg, Parlay Lake, Savage Area Schools, Emergency Preparedness and Response Coordinator.
Joe Weida, Transportation Services.
Luke Kennan, County Sheriff.
Adam Perry, Sheriff's Office.
All right, thank you. Questions?
I can start on page six, the first slide. So page six is a result of the resident survey. In their opinion, the quality of the county's disaster preparedness is increasing or improving. What is attributing to this improvement?
So that's actually a really good question. And I say that just between reports and slides, we'll see a little bit of difference in how people in the county are perceiving compared to how people nationwide are perceiving readiness. So in the past, some of the things that we've done to be out and work on our outreach capabilities are, we have quarterly articles in SCENE that are typically published. We've been focused on the last two, three years on taking one aspect of individual preparedness, focusing on that. So for one of the articles, it was a focus on food and water supply. Another was financial planning. Another was having a disaster tip. So in that environment, we focused, really broke down kind of this huge concept of how individuals should be ready and prepared for themselves, and started to break it down into attainable, easily, I guess, moat bites that people could actually take and improve upon themselves. We've also been engaged at the county fair. Well, this year, we had handouts at our county fair that would help people go through a checklist to see if they were prepared for disaster. I will tell you that coming to a county fair, don't necessarily want to be talking about disasters. However, we were there and we faced them out, handing them stuff they could take with them and look at after that. We've also focused in our Citizens Academy, our Residents Academy, really focused that change on, instead of talking about, here's what we do as emergency management, but instead, we've migrated that conversation to what they, as residents, can do to protect themselves and be ready for disasters. On top of that, we pretty regularly get requests from community groups to go out and actually speak with them and talk about things that they can do to prepare themselves. So we're in long-term care facilities, we're in different housing units and different schools. So we're pretty active in trying to engage the community, specifically with the mission of talking about how they can increase their individual level of preparedness. And as we talk about all those things we do, one of the keys for us is that we understand that we, as a county, can't provide everything for everyone. So we, as a county, get much stronger when we focus on building the individual resilience up of our community. So as people become more disaster tolerant and more capable of helping themselves, it requires less burden on county services, and ultimately allows us to focus on what we need to focus on as a county and hope that people are able to take care of themselves as long as possible.
So you mentioned the national data. So on page seven, you've got the National Survey of Preparedness for Hazard Profiles. And so just how does that help you when you're comparing and looking at some of the pieces that you just talked about, using this data to help inform your work?
So this was actually a dataset that we hadn't been looking at until pretty recently. So just a guide where this data is coming from. FEMA has, for a few years now, been doing a nationwide survey of communities all across, residents all across the United States. So it's a few people from Minnesota, a few from every other state, and they try and focus in on a really good mix and a really good sample of the population. And they ask specific questions about what people are doing to actually prepare themselves. So as we look at this data, what we can see is that people have different things that drive their individual preparedness. So awareness is really an interesting line on this chart. Somehow, we're missing out nationwide on connecting to people, on helping them be prepared to help themselves. And one of the interesting, really interesting things, looking deep into the data that I learned, is that people's awareness of natural hazards specifically and disasters that could be impacting them was pretty high before COVID. And then as we went through the COVID pandemic, people's awareness levels actually reduced. So here we are in the middle of one of the biggest national disasters we've experienced in years, and people's awareness of their potential impact in a disaster actually reduced for some reason. Why that is, I don't understand. But we need to understand that people are, even though we've been through a lot lately, people aren't seeing the, aren't perceiving the risks to be as high as they had been in the past. So the data is very interesting, and I don't understand necessarily the psychology behind everyone's responses, but it's very interesting to see some of this trending nationwide.
So page seven, it says, the slide is National Survey of Preparedness, and then page eight is National Survey of Influencers. What is the difference between these two slides? What is influencers?
So honestly, Evan's the guy who put all this data together. I'm going to give credit where it's due. I pointed him to the data and said, what can you make out of this? So since he's standing at the podium, I'm not going to put him on the spot.
Okay, so my understanding of this data is that the influencers to preparedness have to do with the precursors to those items on the other slides. So either you're prepared for each of those things or not. And then these are the precursors to being prepared or not. So what are the steps that you would have to take to be prepared for each of those areas? And have you taken those steps?
Thank you, Evan.
Yep.
Yeah, did really well on being put on the spot.
Scott, could we look at page nine? So this is the percent of 911 calls that are answered within the national standards timelines. And this has been a performance area that has been challenging. And certainly, this data would suggest some improvement. And I'm wondering if you could talk about that?
Absolutely. So even though it's within our division, separate from emergency management, I oversee both the 911 communications center of the radio operations and then emergency management, kind of wear three hats. One of the huge challenges we had when I started seven years ago is that we were underperforming in the 911 center. There's two key national standards that are out there that are really important for us to measure ourselves against. One is how quickly we are able to answer those incoming 911 calls, and the second is how quickly we're able to dispatch out fire departments. So this slide talks about, the first area that we really focused on addressing is that we weren't meeting the standard. We increased some training, but the key element and why we weren't meeting the standard is we were grossly understaffed at the time. So we've made a significant effort to make sure that we were obtaining and hiring and getting good quality people in our communication center. And as we've done that, as we've been able to increase our staff, what you can see is that, yes, we've shown continuous improvement in that area, and now we're well exceeding. So looking at the standard, you know, the standard is 90% of calls have to be answered within 10 seconds. So, and I kind of want to caveat that or talk about what that really means. Majority of our calls come from cell phones. It takes two to three seconds for a cellphone to actually come into the 911 system. So if you've had to call 911, you know it takes a little bit before that call actually gets there. So we're talking about 10 seconds on the standard. It's really more like 12 or 13 seconds. So the national standard was set that it's okay that one out of 10 people have to wait 12 or 13 seconds before someone's going to answer their call. I think our community has a much higher expectation for service. And what we actually find out in our area is that if people don't have their call answered within 11 or 12 seconds, they hang up and call again. That creates a whole nother set of problems for us because now we have what's called an abandoned 911 call, and we have to call back. And we have a new incoming 911 call that has to be processed. So by increasing our staffing, by increasing our ability to answer those calls and making sure we have staffing working at the right time of day, we're able to really show some improvement on that. And 911's an area that we have a ton of data in, and we're able to use that data to schedule how many people are working at any given point in time. So we know specifically, obviously, summers in Scott County are extremely busy for everybody, but especially in those areas. But we also know that our busiest hour of the week is from 4:00 PM till 5:00 PM on a Monday or Tuesday. So using our data, we know that, for whatever reason, that's been consistent over the last six years, that's our busiest time, so that's when we put the most people on our staff. And we're able to then make sure we're effectively answering those phone calls and getting service to the community.
I want to just give either Luke or Adam a chance to respond to that as well. That's been an area we've been looking at for staff turnover and just that, especially through COVID. And if there was anything you wanted to add to Scott's description about...
I think to emphasize too, what Scott talked about, it's not necessarily that we added a lot of staff or we've been fully staffed. It's that he's used the math behind the call volumes to really adjust those shifts for, in the, in the past, areas, 24/7 areas were really staffed with like three shifts, day, afternoon, and the overnight, you know, right? And you just put people on those different shifts, and his staff really comes in on increments all throughout the day to build up to that staffing level and drop down. So it's a lot of more math behind it of how to really get the right amount of people there at the right times to do our work versus thinking of like a three-shift, 24-hour operation. So it's been a lot of Scott's work behind the scenes using kind of those call volumes, radio usage data to kind of drive when we have people working or not to try to fill that. And then a lot of this too is, we may need five people at a certain time of the day, but if we're understaffed, that just means we, you know, we're pulling people in or holding them over on their shifts or overtime and other things. I have to make it work. So even though we may not be fully staffed, we still hit these guidelines based on how we utilize staff.
Thank you. So this slide mentions that the less urgent callers are sometimes placed on hold. Is that a result of the staffing challenges, or is that something that you would do?
So that's something that we've always had to do in our area. So some very large communication centers, once the telecommunicator answers the call, they are on that call till they're done. And anything incoming is just going to wait in queue until somebody's available to take the call. In Scott County, we prioritize our incoming calls. So some, like Dakota County is our neighbor to the east. They have everybody call 911 for every call. There's benefits to doing that and getting additional location information into the center. But the downside of that is that it makes it more difficult to triage those calls coming in. So with us, we have calls that come in on 911, and we have calls that come in on our non-emergency numbers. And our standard is to answer those 911 calls first. Once a call is answered, if there's additional lines ringing, we do, as a practice here, put people on hold if there's a call that continues to ring. So if someone calls on 911 and says that they locked their keys in their car, and yet another 911 line rings, the person who locked their keys in the car is going to get put on hold. Well, we check that other 911 call and see if that is a true emergency. And if it is, then we deal with that call first, and then we come back. As soon as someone's clear, they'll come back and provide service to the person who needs help getting in their car.
I see we have some partners here at the table. So maybe, might be a good idea, I'd be interested in hearing a little bit about how you partner. See, we've got Parlay Lake Schools here on how that worked, how that has come together, and maybe some lessons learned, and how you plan to move forward.
Yeah, I'll kick this one off and then pass it on. So one of the interesting areas about emergency management is that part of our role is an internal-facing organization. So we provide service and planning for the county, how the county does business. But on top of that, we're also an externally-facing organization as well. So the county is designated by FEMA and by the feds as the contact point for all things disasters. It's unique in tribal government, and Kurt will talk about that. But just as we serve internally and serve the different divisions within the county in planning and preparing the county itself to survive and recover from a disaster, we also have the role in working with our partners in all of our communities as well. So it's really a split role that we have to accomplish, and that can be difficult, and it can be a lot of work. But it's really important to understand that we focus internally and externally with our partners, and our success truly relies on the success of our partners. If Kurt's having a bad day in his area, it means that Scott County's having a bad day. And that's been our guiding philosophy on working with our partners and ensuring that they're doing as well as they can be.
I would second that. Some of the things that we deal with as an employee for a tribal sovereign nation are different than what Scott County or the state of Minnesota will have effect. But what we've found out is if it affects us, it affects you. And the tribal end of it gives us some opportunities where the community has said, be a good neighbor. And if we're, if we partner with things like mitigation and debris removal, and Scott and I have worked together extensively with U.S., which Urban Area Security Initiative, to do the response to terrorism, not only in Scott County, but it goes out to Dakota County, Hennepin County, Ramsey County. The bridge collapse taught us that we can't do it alone, and we have to have strong partners. I always tell the story that I worked the bridge collapse for 72 hours. I was nowhere near the bridge. I was on an ambulance covering Scott County during that time, so little line could be at the bridge. And that's the partnership we try to work with every day, whether it's emergency management, law enforcement, fire, EMS.
School safety is obviously a community-wide concern, statewide and nationwide concern. My role was new, and I started less than three months ago as Emergency Preparedness Response Coordinator. The school district didn't have somebody dedicated full-time to the concerns of school safety, although I think my colleagues that were focused on it put a lot more than part-time work into it. They partnered with Scott. They partnered with emergency management from Ramsey County, from local fire departments and law enforcement agencies to build a really comprehensive crisis management plan, and they exercise it regularly. In my short three months or less with this position, Scott has been a really visible partner. Emergency management from Scott County has been very visible. I know him and now Kurt pretty well, just in the short time. He's been, he being Scott, has been at the reunification trainings that we've hosted. Tomorrow, we have a Community Crisis Response Team tabletop exercise where we're bringing partners from law enforcement, fire, emergency management, other schools in our district, the parochial schools, ambulance service, just a whole comprehensive team to look at a few different scenarios, how we would manage them, and just getting to know the partners before the emergency occurs so that we are well-prepared. My coworkers also mentioned specifically that Scott was heavily involved in a rollout program for our radio system. I think they were talking a little bit about patching so that if we do have an incident in our district, that we can communicate with the county. Because that, excuse me, as we've seen across the country, there's, there's been always, the downfall in incidents are, is communications, and who's where, who's doing what. And when these school incidents occur, it is, it is massive. It involves a lot of people. It involves a lot of responders. Everybody's showing up. Even some folks that are well-intended and wanting to help show up. But that makes for a very chaotic environment, and ensuring that we have clear communications and coordination with our partners ahead of time provides us for a smooth response to an incident should it occur. Now, we hope it never does, but we want to be incredibly well-prepared should it. So we are looking forward to working with Scott and, no, Mr. Lane as well, going forward, receiving their expertise and their perspectives from the law enforcement and communications and emergency preparedness side.
You know, can I ask, the, one of the things that Scott and I have talked about a long time is there just, it's, it's hard to get data in this area to show, it's hard to prove prevention, right? It's hard to prove all the things, all the bad things that don't happen. Are there markers that any of you look at that tell you that, as a community, we are more resilient or getting stronger or better prepared? The resident survey data certainly talked about what residents think, but are there things you look at that tell you if the work that we're doing is making the difference in preparedness that you want it to make? That's like to anybody on the panel, but...
I'll start with, Scott and I have worked extensively together to, if, as he had said, if we're having a bad day, you're having a bad day. Our citizens are in your area, your citizens are in our area. And part of, we base everything on is our plans. And whether it's our hazard mitigation plan, emergency operation plan, the THIRA, all of those, those we work together so that we become a part of their plan, they become a part of our plan. And that includes the schools, the highways, the law enforcement. When we have that basis of response and then we test it, that gives us a good basis of at least we respond in the way we're supposed to and the way we've trained to. The other part that happens is that we always plan for the worst and hope for the best. And it's a misnomer in our world that you can plan for everything, and it just can't happen. So the data is, you're 100% correct. It's very difficult to show what that is. One of the ways is how the response goes in past histories. The Blakely Response at the flooding, the response was excellent, done. And when you go back and you, your after-action, so that gives us the data that our plans were in place, our plans were used effectively, and we responded correctly.
Nice, thank you. If we look at this slide on page 10, it's talking about the NIMS compliance. Page three in the packet, it notes that NIMS compliance is a requirement for many federal funding sources and disaster aid, and also notes that some staff in the county are not yet finished with their training on that. So is the county, does it require 100% compliance? Or is the county have enough people trained to meet the requirement to be eligible for that funding?
That's a great question. So the standard is that anybody who could respond to a disaster or emergency should be trained in the 100, 200, and 700 NIMS classes. These are the classes that I consider to be an awareness-level class. These are not going to make you proficient. They're not going to make you an expert. They're, they're very the, I call them the overview or awareness-level training. So the standard is everybody who could respond to an emergency should be there. We, as a county, have adopted the standard that everybody needed to get moved forward into this level of training countywide. And we actually initiated this, it must have been back in 2018, based on when we started actually collecting the data. So a conversation I had with our administrator at the time was that, listen, we can't predict what's going to happen in the future, but we know that we could have something really big. And if something really big happens, we need to have all of our staff, at least to this awareness-level training, so that they can function in a role. Coincidentally, about two years later, we had something really big happen. And it was helpful that we had people who had already gone through that awareness-level training, that basic training, as we stepped up, not knowing how we were going to be impacted by the pandemic. One of the tactics that we did was, we had our group of people were put into a EOC or Incident Management Team to try and figure out how to move forward and deal with what still or was an infodemic more than a pandemic because we had so much information coming at us, and the world changed every two hours, it seemed like. So as we're proceeding through that path, having built a group of people who at least had the basics down was really helpful because it really showed us that you could be somebody who worked down at the customer service window, and you are now pulled into a team, and you're going to be working that disaster. You know, we don't typically think of that role being utilized, but the pandemic was a perfect example of how deep within our organization that response required assets and resources to be pulled, especially knowing that early days, it sounded like the COVID was so transmittable that we were very concerned that if we had a member of one of those teams get sick, the whole team could get sick. So as a result, we had to create three separate tiers or three separate teams that were on a rotating schedule. So being able to staff three teams and then go for a couple days with each team, then rotate out to another team, it was extremely, honestly, it was extremely invasive into our organization as far as pulling a lot of people who wouldn't necessarily be in an emergency response role, who had to come in and step up. And I, I'm still very proud about how all of our staff members performed. I think a lot of people who never considered they would have a possible chance of ever being involved in that kind of response showed up, and they did their best. And I think the county can be proud of people, especially people who are at lower levels of our organization, who don't necessarily normally have that level of authority and responsibility. People really stepped up, and I think that was really impressive, and I think that was a credit to our, our staff, the quality of our staff, and how people care for their community.
I'll take on to that. Our school district crisis response team is also trained in IS-100, 200, and 700. So we have a couple dozen folks that are now aware of National Incident Management System, and we employ that into our own response efforts and reunification plans. And it also makes our staff available. We're starting to have conversations with other school districts about mutual aid agreements and things like law enforcement does, should there be an incident in another neighboring school district where we could support them.
So Scott, you had said that NIMS is sort of that basic training, and then there's some narrative in here about another group, like a more highly-trained select few that would go into a team, and they would need additional training. And is that the ICS-300 that you had mentioned, is that the training that they would need?
So the 300 course is probably the first course that deals with an increased level of complexity. There are a number of staff members in the county, that was a small group, that have been through the 300 course. On top of that, there is a 400 course, which honestly is really complex for really complex incidents that most people here are never going to use. Part of our plan moving forward... Part of our plan moving forward, as we've looked at what happened with our response to the pandemic, how we can improve, is that we've identified that we need to get back to what was done a number of years ago, where the county had personnel designated in certain roles, that they would be a part of an incident management team should a disaster happen. The county had that 20 years ago, and at some point in time stopped pursuing that, and I think that's an area that we identified after the pandemic as, as being a weakness that we need to improve. We asked the board for a budget increase for 23 to provide a training beyond that 300 course, which is an all-hazard incident management team training, and we received that funding, and it was an expensive ask, but our intention as we move forward, thankfully, we've got Bob here in the room as well, who literally just started yesterday, as a deputy EM director, so we didn't put him in the line of fire today. But as we are proceeding with our plan, we're going to get back to identifying what are those key roles in the organization where people should be prepared to step up into an emergency response role, and designate that within the job description of each one of those roles, and then provide that advanced level of training. So the all-hazard incident management team training, something Kurt and I have been through, it's really, really good training. You spend a week going through scenarios, and I think the thing I like about it most is that the instructors are all people who have 25, 30 years of incident management experience, high-quality, people who've got tons of experience, and they walk in on day one and say, we are not the NIMS police. If you use the wrong term, but you get it right, that's a win. This isn't about using the right terminology, it's not about being perfect, it's about looking at a complex situation, organizing it, and getting to the outcomes we want to get to. And it's a really, really effective training that our county, once we're able to get this team identified, get people through this training, we're going to be significantly stronger moving forward.
And page four, kind of maybe details a little bit on resource commitment, and there's a point that's pulled out, I guess, comparing Carver County's allotment of about 100 hours per week to ours of about 55 hours. And so just maybe, can you talk about maybe what concerns you with that, or maybe what's not getting done because of that?
So we did an informal survey where I asked all of our neighbors to help me understand how many staff hours were dedicated towards emergency management, so I could kind of establish a baseline of where we sat, and we haven't got that slide finished?
Page 12.
Page 12, perfect. So in emergency management, as I said earlier, I wear multiple hats, so I'm the county's emergency management director, and I oversee the 911 communications area and our radio communication system. And then on top of it, I'm also a sworn captain, so occasionally I do what's needed by the organization, by the sheriff's office as well. That's not the normal model, at least in the metro and even our neighbors as we proceed further outstate. Carver County has a, is the only other county in the metro that has that model, where there's one person who oversees 911 and emergency management, but in their area, they've had a lot more staff dedicated towards the management side of the 911 side, so they've always had a full-time PSAT manager who is strictly an admin position, and then they've had supervisors who are also dedicated to the admin role of the 911 center. In Scott County, we just got our PSAT manager position back about a year ago or so, and our supervisors here are working supervisors, so they're actually on the floor taking calls. So because we didn't have enough staffing to kind of take that Carver model where the supervisors can truly be true supervisors, our supervisors are working, taking calls, and trying to do supervisory duties when they're not busy. So we've always been significantly tighter on staffing over here than the Carver model. So in Carver County, their director says she estimates that about 75% of her time is really focused on emergency management, then she has two full-time deputy director positions under her to work on emergency management, so they're putting quite a bit of time in here. Realistically, I've been about 35 hours a week on 911 communications and the communication system, and then somewhere in the 10 to 15 hours a week on emergency management. And we've had one full-time deputy director. If we compare that with a lot of our neighbors, what you see is that our complement of staff is significantly lower than the neighbors that are around us. And ultimately, what that means is we are doing what we can with the resources we have, but there's a lot of things that we're not getting done, and we haven't gotten done. And at the end of the day, I think we've done less with less, and there's been a consequence to the county in that we aren't as prepared as we should be. And ultimately, I've got a lot of, as, look for the, look for the things that I want to accomplish. It's very difficult, because those are all things that take a lot of time, a lot of planning time, a lot of resources, and we haven't necessarily had those resources here.
So Scott, kind of maybe this answers one of my questions, and in the next steps, it says, one of the things is to restart an exercise planning cycle, and there it says it notes Scott County remains at a high risk of active violence due to number of maintained venues in the county. And then it, so my question is, are there concerns of waiting to do these types of trainings and exercises till '24, moving them on, and what are the concerns if you don't have the time or the staff to do those exercises?
Well, so there's a couple, about three questions in there.
Yeah, sorry about that.
So one is, yes, Scott County, because we are a part of River South, we have a lot of large entertainment venues here, some of those are more fixed, like Valley Fair, Canterbury, and some of them are more pop-up locations, like the Renaissance Festival, sitting in the back. There's, each one of those events brings additional risk of something bad happening to Scott County. No matter what, every county across the country has some risk, a school shooting can happen anywhere, we have to be ready for that. But if you look at soft targets and the current trending from intelligence on where the threats are to our homeland, it's the uptick in domestic violent extremism, I got the acronym GRIN, and the risks are soft targets. A lot of the research that I've read recently talks about where the most likely area to be attacked would be right now, and research that the federal government has done has determined that there's actually a lower risk that a large stadium, like US Bank or even Target Field, would be attacked. And the reason for that is because of the large population at those stadiums, they have a large police presence, they have scanners, they have a lot of security in place, and all those things are detracting to people who would want to disrupt the world and be involved in a terrorism event. They're looking for an area that would impact commerce, would impact people's perceptions of safety, and if doing something at a stadium is too difficult, it's not difficult for us to surmise that there's a lot of places in Scott County where we have a lot of pop-up events and a lot of fixed events, and a lot of people come in here, where if something bad happens here, it's going to have a regional impact, if not a nationwide impact. So we are constantly working in an environment where we have a bigger risk, and that's just part of who we are, and part of it is we enjoy having River South and the entertainment venues, and, you know, I worked at Valley Fair 25 years ago, and it was a great place to work, and that's why I'm still here, as someone who grew up from outstate. So these are really great parts of our community, but they do bring additional risk into us. All right, so I answered one of your three questions, now I forgot the other two.
So are there consequences of not having enough time or staffing to address those?
Yes.
Since we do have higher risk here in Scott County?
At the end of the day, the amount we can do to improve our response to these areas is going to improve how we would actually function should a bad day happen here. So the time we spend doing that is very key. We have what we call a full-scale exercise cycle, where we do a big disaster drill. What people think of the big disaster drill, police, fire, public works, all moving around. We were on par to do one, actually in partnership with Jacque Beaman-Walkin and Sioux Community in 2021, it was called Asher 21, an active shooter hostile event response. With that, we had partners of Mystic Lake Security, Valley Fair, Canterbury Park, and we were working to build an exercise that would simulate a bad day happening at one of those events, simulate the public safety response, and understand what our unique capabilities are here and what we needed to improve upon. As we were building towards that, we also had some trainings that were occurring with police, fire, and EMS, building towards that active or hostile event response, where we were out at our regional training center for a number of different days, and we had police, fire, and EMS personnel going into a simulated hostile event, working together in partnership to go in and recover and rescue the people who were injured, get them out, give them to a transportation location, and get them to ultimately to definitive care. So we actually didn't stop all training by any means, but when COVID came in and we couldn't have in-person meetings, we didn't know what the future was going to be like. That really put a damper on our planning efforts for this, and we had to make the decision to postpone that full-scale, not knowing what the environment was going to look like. So we've recently begun those conversations again, to, again, it's going to be a partnership between Scott County and Jacque Beaman-Walkin and Sioux Community to build a full-scale exercise and go test the capabilities again. You know, there's another thing I want to highlight that, you know, kind of popped in my brain as I was walking through these situations. If something happens in Minneapolis and a lot of people are hurt, Minneapolis has some resources that we simply don't have here. They have a lot of people, they have some different infrastructure, they also have a very close proximity to Level 1 trauma centers. When somebody gets very badly hurt here in Scott County, there is a solid 40-minute drive to get to a trauma center. So if we have a bad day here and a lot of people are hurt, we have to be able to make sure that our responders have advanced training and have advanced equipment so that they can stabilize those injuries very quickly. One of the things we've done with that is we actually have in all of our squad cars, even our detective cars, have trauma bags in them for our sheriff's office. So if any of our staff were to respond to an active event, we've got advanced medical equipment in there, number of tourniquets, chest seals to take care of puncture wounds that would be penetrating the chest cavity, a gauze, a lot of tools that are there so we can, instead of waiting for the ambulances to show up, our police officers can initiate that response right away, stabilize those injured parties, and give them the best chance of success.
All right. I wanted to ask, as we were planning for this conversation, it was important to the sheriff's office to include the highway folks and the folks on Joe Weida's team. I'm wondering if we could talk a little bit about why you thought that was important, and what the communication is with that group as we look at our internal, our capability to respond?
I just want to say the biggest thing that everybody needs to recognize is that public works are the heroes of any disaster. It, I think it gets Joe's face red at all, but if you think about even the pandemic, totally a public health-related disaster, who's out setting up the drive-through clinics? Who's organizing what the traffic flow is going to look like? Who was moving the barricades around? We always rely on our public folks, our public work staff. We need any kind of heavy lifting, whether that be setting up for immunization clinics or drive-through clinics, or it's pulling trees out that are accumulating in the river. Public works is our go-to when we need any kind of heavy lifting, any kind of manpower to solve a big problem. So they're always the ones who are kind of behind the scenes, and they get the call and they deliver what needs to be delivered. And I think for our office, it was really important to invite them to the table and make sure that we talk about that, because they really do save everybody when it comes down to disasters of any kind, whether it be a tornado that comes through and we have a huge debris management issue to take care of, road closures, repair. Joe spent a lot of time, even going back to our 19 or 14 floods, on what the, dealing with what the impact the roads are, and honestly, when it comes down to talking to FEMA, I can say, here's where a road's damaged, and here's, we need some rip-rep or something like that. I kind of can say the words, Joe knows what he's talking about. He can say exactly what was necessary and why, and that's a far more convincing delivery of information than I can do. So he's the expert, his team are the people who actually solve problems in many of our disasters, and we'd really like to highlight that.
Joe, is your team then included in some of the prep or the planning as some of these events are simulated?
Yeah, of course, they've all been through the NIMS training, and then we also participate in some of the exercises. I remember what year it was, we had one out at the fairgrounds, and we had several key staff involved in that exercise out at the fairground.
Okay, all right. So speaking of pulling trees out of the river, like how, what's our current state of preparedness with our rising floodwaters?
So we've been watching the river for quite a while, so in Scott County, we have overland flooding, where we have too much rain and things like our ponds, our lakes get big, and then we have river flooding, and they're very different, even though they kind of get lumped together, they're very different risks. So this year, we had reason to be concerned about overland flooding, and we had a lot of snowpack, we had a lot of moisture in that snow, but thankfully, because we had been in a drought for two years, our soil was extremely, extremely dry, and partially because of the fact that we had snowfall first instead of hard cold, and the fact that our soil was so dry, when we did start experiencing melt, the soil soaked up that water very quickly, even with rain on top of snow, those are usually really, really bad days for us. The soil was so dry, and there wasn't a frost layer preventing the absorption, so that melt and the rain was able to go into the soil really quickly. So our overland flooding risk this year really mitigated itself and equalized the drought effect that we've been experiencing for a couple of years. Regarding river flooding, right now, we're at a perfect time to have this conversation here before the board. We're actively monitoring the river. One of the first big impact points we see in Scott County is when the water levels of the Minnesota River get high enough that we have to close the Jordan River Crossing. And we have to close that crossing, not necessarily because the road's too low or the bridge is too low on our side, but after you go across the bridge into Carver County, the road actually dips a bit. And as that road dips and goes through that low section along the river, as the river comes up, unfortunately, water will start to get and encroach upon the travel lanes, and that's the point where we have to do a closure. Right now, the forecast out for one week from now is showing that we're going to be one foot below the point where that closure hits, a week out. Looking upstream, we know that the river's already crested Montevideo. As you look further down to Mankato, you can see that there's a forecast for that area to, the river to plateau pretty quickly here, but what's concerning is that after it plateaus, about six days out from now, there's going to be one little blow, I guess, blub of water that comes through and surges one more time, and that could rise the river another foot to foot and a half. And these are all based on the forecast right now that we're watching. The forecast change, and the forecasts also don't include future rain beyond the 24-hour window. So if we get a lot of heavy rain, we should expect that the impacts are going to be larger. If we stay dry, we can expect the impacts to be, you know, where they are or lower. So right now, we're forecast at least a week out to be one foot below the point where we have to close that out, but we know that our crest point is probably a few days beyond that. So we're going to be very close to the point where we have to close that Jordan Crossing. The only real impact we're seeing right now is that the trails that go under the Bloomington Ferry Bridge are now closed because of the high water. So as far as a flood year and a spring flood risk, this is actually a lower risk than normal year, so we're going to have the impacts potentially at Jordan, and I know Joe's team's been watching that as well, but there's a really good chance that we're going to see a crest just below that closure point, and we're going to be okay.
All right. Any final questions from the facilitators? All right, then, Mr. Chairman, I'll turn it over to you.
Thank you. I've got a couple. You know, there were a couple of statements that were made or in the report that are troubling. We're doing less with less and we're not as prepared as we want to be. Well, that's a problem. And I think we need to, when we're going budgeting and we're looking at staffing, we need to address that. The worst thing that can happen is, at least to us as electeds, is to have some kind of event and then not be prepared and the public go, what were you doing? As a county board, what were you doing? Why wasn't this funded better? Why weren't you prepared? You know, we don't want to have that. We want to be, and I heard also, we can't prepare for everything. I get that. There are things that we're going to see or experience, you know, that are unique. Or like with the pandemic, I would say, you know, I know we're not talking about that today, but I, that, we were not, as a society, prepared for that. The PPE was woefully lacking everywhere at the start of that. So we've learned some things. You know, we, you know, I think we scored higher on our assessment from the community because the county did do a tremendous effort in regard to the pandemic. And people are really pleased, I think, by what the county did during that crisis. But I'd say we, as a board, we, I think, whether it's the road safety or whatever it is, we've always said, safety is our highest priority. And so if we don't have the staffing and we're doing less with less and we're not as prepared as we want to be, we got to address that. That's my commentary. I do have another question. I was aware, you know, obviously you know, my son was applying around in law enforcement. And he ultimately got a job in Cowrath Springs, which was his main desire. But he had an EMT. And I was kind of shocked, surprised that that really was no credit at that time. In other words, no law enforcement said, oh, you're an EMT. You know, nobody perked up to that. It was like, nah, we don't require that, that's really, that's nice, but it's no big deal. That was kind of the response back then. Has that changed, do you think? And is having our officers become EMT, is this? Well, first off, if you hire, do you give any kind of points or extra credit for somebody that comes with that as well? And are we encouraging our officers to become EMTs?
Yeah, Commissioner, I can answer that. So we did add that recently in last year, too, as one of our preference when you're hiring or applying for a deputy. Hope you get an interview, hope you get some more points. We don't require it just because there's so few people applying as well that adding more, similar to some communities were making 40 degrees required a handful of years ago and now said, oh, that's even dampers our options more. So we don't require it, but it is an initiative we have. The pandemic kind of messed that up as well, but we were starting to also send one deputy a year through a EMT training, training through the community here, the travel community, to get them trained. And as Scott mentions, medical response is a big deal in our communities, especially in our townships where the ambulance responses are, you know, somewhat delayed and/or now because of staffing levels, they're even more delayed. Where it might be that Milwaukee Public Safety is coming with their ambulance because Alina is already tied up and has nobody available. So we see even some longer response times, you know, up to 20 minutes to get to a medical. So we do think that is important and as our community ages and the people are living in their homes longer as well. You know, the whole way we operate, we see that medicals are a huge part of the work we do in responding to emergencies and providing, and then lastly, I would add, it's also a huge one for law enforcement. We come to a medical and provide care, we're providing a positive interaction with the community that is really important. And I see some communities around our state and country go, well, fire department will go to medicals, cops will just do these other stuff. And I'm like, but you're losing that ability to provide that service. No different than we help somebody lock out or a basic thing like that, we're giving a, or doing a funeral escort. May not be a definite law enforcement need, but it's that positive interaction with the community that's engaging the community in a positive way that we have a win. So I think it's, medicals are important about many areas to me, so I agree.
I got one little follow-up on that. And I Googled it, I didn't really know how much, how many hours. And according to what I Googled, it's about 170 hours to come an EMT. Is that kind of close or is that about right?
Yeah.
It was 120 when I took it, but that was in the 90s.
I actually teach EMT for Chicago County and Sioux Community. So yeah, it's approximately 120 hours required. Then we fill in another 40 hours with patient contacts and others. So yeah, approximately 160 to complete and get your EMT. I've been an EMT since 1989.
Okay. Then the question would be, is there anything the board needs to do to fund or encourage more officers getting that rather than one a year? It seems like you'll take forever to work its way through a fours. But I mean, if there's anything you could recommend to us, I want to hear that later someday, you know?
That's a great idea, we'll consider that.
Okay. That's it.
Thank you. Jody, did I see?
In the news recently has been the train disasters. And I'm curious to know, do we have a good relationship with the rails? Do we understand the chemicals that are moving through the communities? And do we have a good plan in place in case there's a disaster that happens on the rails?
So rail, rail obviously runs the whole length of our county along the river. And we currently have Union Pacific as the dominant rail provider in our area. We've been through trainings with the rail. Some of the fire departments, excuse me, some of the fire departments have also gone through advanced trainings on how to deal with a rail accident. But rail accidents are, in and of themselves, they're an extremely threatening thing. If you look at what's actually coming through our community on a daily basis on those trains, there is an extremely high number of hazardous materials coming through. The consequence from a rail disaster is, as we could see with East Palestine, it's huge. And it's not something like you can come in, clean it up, and move forward. I fully believe that in 10 years and 15 years, people are still going to be talking about how many people in that community that didn't leave are going to have long-term health impacts as a result of the exposures that they received. So yes, we're getting training for that. We've got tools, like I have an app on my phone that's credential that allows me to see what's on any train that's coming through our community, based on the IDs in the train. So we have some real-time information with that. But we have to note, if we have a disaster erect similar to what happened in East Palestine, it's going to be a very significant, it's a very long-term consequence event. The other aspect with rail, which is unique, is they're federally protected. So we could try to create ordinances or rules that would say, you can't do this or you can't do that. They aren't going to honestly follow it. Even when we had the Blakely disaster and the hill slid, the rail came through and tried to get their equipment in to go fix the rail because they lose a lot of money when that rail is closed. County tried to stop them. Within minutes, they had a order from a federal judge preventing us from stopping them from accessing the roads which we'd closed. So they have a lot of power and a lot of money. So there are some limits to what we as a local community can do to stop any action from them. So the key for us is really to understand what's coming through, make plans for it, and know that communication is going to be a key element of any response for us. And know that it's going to be big and it's going to be long-term. It, I think that's like the thing that, watching the news and watching, looking at the details of specifically the East Palestine incident is, there's a lot of people saying, it's safe, it's okay. My opinion is it's not. I know Kate and I have had conversations from the hazardous material side on what the real impacts are. And like I said, I fully believe 10 to 15 years from now, we're going to hear about how the soil is still poisonous in that area. And we just need to know that if something like that were to happen, especially having government facilities so close to a train line here and track now, the consequences are going to be huge. And we have to think about our continuity of government and what that means if something were to happen here in Jacoby. We also have to think about what that means to our population. Because if people aren't safe in their homes, they're not going to live here. They're not going to stay here and the consequences are cascading very quickly. So those are horrible things. There's a lot of federal regulation that has been done to try and make rail safer. And I think now that it's in the spotlight, we should expect to see even more regulations come into play. But at the end of the day, there's a lot of very bad chemicals that come by rail and that's done on a regular basis. As a community that has a switching station here, we do have probably more derailments than normal communities do just because we have a lot of tracks, trains that are switching cars here and there. And when that kind of thing happens, it happens oftentimes at 1:00 to 3:00 in the morning. And it just takes one mistake for a car to go off the line. One of the pictures that Evan can flip through, back to our picture slide in the packet, you know, one of the things that we've experienced here is we have had quite a few small-scale derailments where trains do go off the tracks. Looking at that top-left picture, that was on the train track right in front of Valley Fair where a number of years ago, we've had, well, unfortunately, we've had more than one at that location. As the two tracks come into one, the train did follow the merge point correctly and they went off. In that case, we just had a spill of, I think that one was just grain in that location. So nothing hazardous, but on the train, right next to it, there was ethanol. So that could have been bad. Thankfully, that was a winter, that one was a winter event. So if there weren't people at the entertainment venues and it was 3:00 in the morning, so the consequences would have been a little bit mitigated from that. But this is the kind of thing that's happened. Another one that occurred in that same location was just potash that's spilled. So again, not a hazardous material, but those trains are moving bad stuff through our community all the time.
So how do you notify the community of an event that's happening? I know Code Red was utilized at some point and I don't know if that still is the preferred.
Yep, so we've got a few different methods to communicate with the community. We have our social media pages for even like the flooding. We put out a message yesterday, helping the community be aware of that. That's one of our tools. Another tool that we have is our Code Red system. Code Red is an opt-in system. So those people who register to be notified by Code Red will get alerts from that. Another tool we have that's more effective is called the iPOS network. So we actually use the Code Red application to access that network. But through the iPOS network, I can activate an EAS, an emergency alert system that would go out over televisions and radio or, and wireless emergency alert. Wireless emergency alerts are, if you ever receive an Amber Alert on your phone, that's a wireless emergency alert. So we have the capability with Scott County Emergency Management to activate those types of alerts. In fact, when we had the flooding of, I think, 2019 in Jordan, we actually activated a wireless emergency alert, warning people in that area of the flooding and then identified in that alert where the shelter location was. So people in that community who were impacted by that flash flooding event were able to receive an alert on their phones, identifying that there was flash flooding impacting Valley Green Trailer Park and that the shelter was at the high school. So that is a, wireless emergency alerts are opt-out solutions instead of opt-in solution. So when you get a new phone, your phone's capable of receiving a wireless emergency alert. If you go deep enough into the settings, you can find a way to shut it off, but most people don't do that. So that is our most effective mass notification tool that we have in a crisis. And our emergency management division is able to activate those alerts as needed. And actually teach a class on how to activate those alerts to future EM directors in our, across the state. So I've been on the committee for iPOS for a number of years across the state, creating the policy and best practices for that. And now I teach a class to upcoming emergency management directors, teaching them about alert and warning and working with the weather service.
I have one more. I had been on the community emergency response team a number of years ago and we had done sandbagging down in Blakely at one point. Is that something that is still utilized? And is that beneficial to have those volunteers to do that kind of work? Or do we just use Joe and Public Works to take care of that?
So, well, Joe does take care of a lot of things. But we focus Joe's attention on those things that impact public infrastructure primarily and the public response. There's also the private response, which is best served by volunteers. We could use county staff to go sandbag. We have a large group of dedicated volunteers for Scott County that are very willing to come out and help. Good example was in that 2019 flooding of Valley Green. Our SafeCom team was activated for that and they went to the high school. They set up the initial phase of the human shelter at the high school until the Red Cross comes and took over. And just so everybody understands, the Red Cross is a great asset when they're available. They're not always available, but when they are, they're a great asset, they're great partners we work with. But even in the best case, they're six to eight hours out before they can set up a shelter. So we have established the standard of, we own that first six to eight hours until they get here. And our volunteer group with the, from the SafeCom team stepped up. They did the initial aspects of registering the people who needed human shelter. And then by law, anytime we open a human shelter, we also have to open a pet shelter. And for days, our volunteers maintained a pet shelter out at the regional training center. And we took care of those pets, the people who were in the Red Cross shelter. So we've got some really great volunteers. Our SafeCom group has been trained on using our sandbagging machine. So a number of years back, we were able to purchase a machine that allows us to do sandbagging very quickly, where there's a chute with an auger in it and then four different buckets. So the people who are creating sandbags, instead of scooping in like you see on TV a lot, they can hold the bag under, step on a foot pedal, the sand drops down into the bag, take their foot off the pedal, tie their bag, and move it back. We've got, we've increased the capacity of how many sandbags we can create specifically with that asset. And then we've trained with our SafeCom group to create a couple pallets of sandbags so they're comfortable with that. And in the event of a large-scale sandbagging operation, we would use those volunteers to guide community volunteers coming in on how to do that. We don't want to necessarily tie up staff to do that. So volunteers have a huge role in helping keep our community safe.
Thank you.
Thank you, good questions, Commissioner Brennan. I think you've got some of mine. I'm just going to follow up on that volunteer part because Scott, you talked early on, this is really the Scott Show, isn't it? Early on about the presentations to faith communities, apartment complexes, all those things, and about making our, helping our residents be more resilient if there's an emergency. And you've gotten that message to me, it's taken me seven years, but I get that now. Like, when there's a big emergency, we can't do everything. And if our, if the citizens here are better prepared, it'll be better. Have you, do you have any anecdotal evidence of results or outcomes from those visits? Like changes that have been made, things that, because I just think we're really on to something there, the more we can do that.
So I don't locally have good data that supports kind of the outcomes. And I think that's what drove me to driving into some of the federal survey results. And I think that's something that as we proceed forward, we may include within our resident survey, trying to get a better gauge out of that. At the end of the day, the steps for an individual to be prepared to survive a disaster, they're not complicated. But it takes some effort to get there. You have to, you know, many of us have enough food to last a couple of days in our homes, but not everybody. And if you have plenty of canned food, but you don't think about having a can opener, that's not going to do you any good. So there's really not complex steps, but there are steps. We have to find a way to reach out to people, make sure that they're actually doing what they can do and they understand the risks and they can take care of themselves. As we look at that FEMA data, you know, that's really what they're going after. They're asking people, of these 12 things, what have you done in the last year? And that's why, for me, it's an interesting data point that I think we could try and localize and see, can we see a difference? It's going to be interesting on, you know, the responses we get to that resident survey aren't the greatest. People don't like taking surveys. But it's, I think, an option that we have to try and reach out and see, how can we quantify the actual difference that these outreach programs are making to people?
And I'm especially, I'm interested in the individuals, but also interested in the groups. You know, the faith communities, the apartment buildings, those types of things where a change, a systematic change can be made in how they handle, you know, their life there to impact lots of people. And then that brings me to Jody's volunteer question because I wonder, I know we have some very talented volunteers. And I know you and key staff go do a lot of these presentations. Is it something that, that can be, volunteers can be trained in going out and doing these types of presentations?
And that's another great question. I think as we evolve in our mission to really focus on that individual preparedness, it is an area we can try and build that capacity. We haven't in the past and our focus, at least my focus in coming into this role was to try and establish the baseline of where the county is even at. And there was a lot of gaps I identified and I've been working to fill those gaps. But in the last couple of years, my focus has really tried to shift But in the last couple of years, my focus has really tried to shift towards, what can we do to make the community stronger? Because at the end of the day, we just can't do everything for everyone. So yes, I think there's an opportunity there where we could build teams that could go out and ultimately be force multipliers for us.
And again, I understand you've had limited time on all this, so just the thoughts, I came out. NIMs training, so we've had, obviously, we've had some really great success in getting staff trained. How often does that have to be repeated? How, how long is that good for?
So, depending on who you ask. Some people say you do it one and done. Some people say every time there's a new version that comes out, you should retake it because there's something that's changed. Work's still pretty new at keeping that as a requirement across the organization, but at some point in time, we have to rethink that. And I'm not sure where that, that point is. I think when we do that, we want to make sure that we do it in a way that is truly a refresher and not saying, okay, go online and take the boring FEMA class again.
Right.
Because people are going to disengage from that very quickly.
Great, thank you. And then my, my last comment, I guess, when thinking about the volunteers and thinking about the preparedness, I think as we go forward, it's important to really think about our private industry and private business, especially for, you know, our more statistically common, at least right now, emergencies, you know, the floods, the storms, the blizzards, and how important it is for our private businesses, whether it be insurance agents, contractors, all these folks. I think about Joe and your work with salt and sand and soil and water and all that, and it's kind of like, kind of a, a group, government, private effort. And I, I wonder if in the future, there's some room as we try to make the county more, more resilient to get them to feel like they have a role too, so.
Yeah, I think there's an opportunity there. One of the things that's actually changed for Emergency Management is that we now have a stated rule for everybody who receives Medicare or Medicaid funding, they actually have to establish a relationship with their local Emergency Management Department. And the result, what created that was in one of the disasters that impacted Florida. A number of people died because there was a disconnect between that facility and getting the resources they need, which was power. So people died from the exposure they were receiving in their facility. So we have, now on a very regular basis, been out to that whole network of, in the community, and we're doing drills with them and working through plans with them. So that's an area that we've actually had to expand because of that federal requirement. So we are touching more stuff than we have in the past, but there's still a huge section of the community that we're not as actively engaged in as we could be.
Thanks.
Commissioner Brennan?
Thank you very much. So I just want to dovetail on Commissioner Ulrich's comments. I'm looking at the word lucky, got that circled on page three. Heard the phrase less with less, woefully unprepared, I think. Was that, was that the actual phrase?
Let's not call that, let's not call that.
Can't prepare for everything, I, I get that. So, looking at page, part of three, most of four, I guess part of five, are these, I'm just thinking, you come into a room and drop those bombs, there's got to be a, what do we need and when do we need it? Is this that list? I don't think so.
So, as we talked about the next steps, these are the areas that I'm intending to focus a lot of our energy on moving forward. These are where I see the biggest bangs being of our, of our resource allocation moving forward. Getting people trained, doing a fundamental redesign of our emergency operations plan, which is needed. We're, I mean, the, the foundation of that plan was built 20 years ago, and we've had incremental updates to it. We've started a process of completely overhauling it to make it clear, a clear defining document of responsibility and authority, because that's been lacking in the past. Getting back into this exercise planning cycle is so key for us that, you know, we have to keep running the steps through where people identify, I mean, the big part of exercising is, you have a plan that's great, but until you exercise that plan, you don't necessarily understand all of your weaknesses and vulnerabilities. So when you do an exercise, you expose some new gaps, and then that develops your training plan moving forward. That's why it's so important for us to be engaging in that area as well and, and putting our priority into that area.
But we are going to be doing that?
Yes.
So, so there's, there's no roadblock to that. COVID was, I know we had that big one planned for whenever that was, and we're going to, so there's nothing to prevent us, the collective us, from doing those things? I'm curious, what are the things that are keeping us lucky, which I don't believe in luck, but that's all sidebar, and these other things? Like what are those specific things that you can't or are precluded from doing that we need to look at? That's the list I'm super interested in.
So one of the things that, I actually tried to get data for this, and I wasn't able to get it from the state. When we go to our Emergency Management conferences, the state always puts this picture up, and it shows the state of Minnesota and shows disaster declarations. And over the last three, four years, as we've seen this graphic, Scott County is this island that hasn't been impacted nearly as much as the rest of the state. I honestly don't know why. When Wasika was flooding a number of years ago, Hennepin County had massive flooding, Wasika to their south had flooding, La Sua County had flooding, if you looked at the total rain accumulations from that storm, there was a donut around Scott County. And a little bit of Alcoa had some really heavy rain, but there's just this hole that surrounded Scott County, and I think at the last presentation I did, I actually provided that graphic. This has happened repeatedly to us, and part of that is, that's great. Thankfully, our community hasn't been impacted. I'm not a gambling kind of guy, but at some point in time, the house wins, and we're going to get hit. So we have to, we have to assume that just because we've been lucky, this is not an opportunity to become complacent. We have to assume that it's going to happen and, and keep our effort up. One of the things that we're going to be doing, recently, we got approval to add an over-composition in Emergency Management. That'll give us a second deputy director spot. That for, honestly, that's, it's groundbreaking for me to, and earth-shattering to have the capability of doubling our staff time dedicated toward this, towards this planning. It's going to make a huge difference on how we can actually accomplish things internally and externally that we need to do. So it, that's going to be a very significant improvement for us, and I think that's going to set us on the trajectory as we move forward to where we need to be compared to where we've been.
Well, I, I just, I mean, this is for all of us, because we are all in this thing together, whether, you know, when a disaster strikes, there are no jurisdictional boundaries, like we're all hopefully pulling on the oars together because we've worked through this. So if there are things, knowing that we can't, I mean, prevent absolutely every single thing, like I, I get that, but if there is a list of deficiencies, whether we've looked at them before or not, things that we're working on that are in process, that's, that's, that's obviously very good, but are the things that like, oh, shoot, you know, we need to, we found this gap and we don't have an answer, like I would love to see that, like, soon. I think we all probably would. That, don't know what that is, don't know what the answers would be, but just to know, like, okay, to answer some of these less with less, sounds like, you know, we're doing some of that. But if there's something that is glaring, or even not glaring, but something like, hey, we need to prepare for this, and we don't have the X, Y, and Z, like I would like to know that.
Yep, and those are certainly things we can work on as we move forward. Some of these things are things we've been able to find some alternate funding sources for.
Sure, yeah, yeah.
We recently have congressionally funded, whatever earmarks are called nowadays.
Congressively directed funding.
There we go. You know, we recently, as an office, had an opportunity to receive some of those funds, and part of what we are putting in for is, we're putting for pumps and some equipment that we can tie with our volunteer group, not necessarily county staff, but when we have that community flooding, we've been weak on having some of those resources. So we've been able to reach out and kind of be creative in finding funding and try and address some of those small gaps, but there's certainly more as we dive deeper into it that we still need to do.
Well, we all know that earmarks are still tax dollars that we're spending, that we're, but we also know that we send more of our money out, and until that system changes, we do want to be able to have our folks' tax dollars being spent in their home turf. So again, until the system changes, that's where we're at. So that's all I have, Mr. Chair. Thank you.
Thank you very much, everybody.
Thank you.
concludes that. We're going to move to consent agenda, and these items normally pass in one deemed non-controversial. 6.2, adopt resolution number 2023-86, approving the declaration of conservation easement in the Prior Lake, Spring Lake Watershed District. 6.3, adopt resolution number 2023-99, authorizing entering into an agreement with Forest Control Inc. for roadside noxious weed brush spraying for 2023 and 2024. 6.4, adopt resolution number 2023-100, awarding a contract to SM Henshams &amp; Sons Incorporated for the County Highway 66 Bypass Lane Project. 6.5, adopt resolution number 2023-101, authorizing entering into an agreement with WSB and Associates Incorporated for the Clear Lake Regional Park Campground Compliance Project. 6.6, adopt resolution number 2023-102, authorizing entering into a grant agreement with the United US Department of Housing and Urban Development to accept funding for the Miriam Junction Regional Trail Project. 6.7, adopt resolution number 2023-103, approving amendment number two to the service agreement with the Well Ministries. 6.8, adopt resolution number 2023-104, adopting a minor amendment for Camping World Holdings Incorporated to the Scott County 2040 Comprehensive Plan Update. 6.9, adopt resolution number 2023-95, authorizing entering into a cooperative agreements with Helena, Jackson, Louisville, and Sand Creek Townships for participation in the 2023 Seal Coat Program. 6.10, adopt resolution number 2023-106, authorizing a budget amendment and awarding a contract to Pearson Brothers, Inc. for the 2023 Annual County Highway Seal Coat Project. 6.11, approve the renewal application for precious metal dealer license for Excel Pawn and Jewelry in Shakopee for 2023. 6.12, approve payroll processing of personnel actions, and 6.13, approve record of disbursements and approved claims. Those are the 13 items on consent. Are there any you would like to have pulled for discussion or a separate vote? And if not, is there a motion to approve those 13 items?
Mr. Chair, move approval.
There's a motion from Commissioner Breck, second from Commissioner Ulrich. Thank you. Is there any further discussion? Being none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Post, motion carries. Thank you. 7.1, we're going to receive information on year-end and first-quarter financial results. Thank you, Michelle.
Good morning.
I'm here today to go over the year-end financial results and also the first-quarter projections for 2023. Some things have changed since last update in March. Most of it is the same that we'll be going through today, but I'll just go through each one of these areas, briefly highlighting what some of the changes are. Overall, for Scott County, we are looking to end the year with a favorable $98,000 to our fund balance. Division by division, we show administration with a favorable $223,000. This is primarily related to our SMSC contribution that we received from them. Community Services is showing a favorable $211,000 variance, and this is primarily related to building inspections permitting revenue for the year. The county attorney is showing an unfavorable $174,000. Again, this is related to the city attorney's revenue that is corrected for the 2023 budget. Court Administration has a favorable $186,000. This is related to a reduction in court-appointed attorneys that were used during 2022. Health and Human Services has a favorable $2.1 million, with the largest driver being low placement services needed during 2022. That would be our out-of-home placements, community corrections placements, and then also adult placements. In addition to this, behavioral, behavioral health expenses were reduced in 2022 for chemical dependency reforms that was done. The Medical Examiner has a favorable $106,000 variance, and this was related to a reimbursement for 2021 services, the savings that occurred that year. They issued back a payment to us. Office of Management and Budget has a favorable $208,000. This is primarily due to our information technology area with a service provider that was not providing the services that we contracted for, so the contract was ended and payment was not made. So that provided us savings financially, but unfortunately, from an operational standpoint, we did not get the services we wanted. That's with our help desk support and services in that direction. The, the biggest change that we have is within our countywide impacts. We're showing just under a $2.5 million negative variance. The largest item for this is, I just, we discussed about this in March, it's accounting standards require us to make a mark-to-market adjustment. So the reason we do this is, in case we had an emergency and had to sell all of our, all of our investments at year-end, we have to show what we would get for our investments. Because the interest rates have increased so much, our investments at year-end had a lower interest rate than what the market itself has. So for us to sell our investments at year-end, we would have taken a loss of 1.2 million. But this is just a paper entry. We will hold our investments to maturity, so we will not lose any money, and when it gets reinvested, those funds will be invested at higher rates. And then, in addition to this, we also have some fund transfers that occurred in this area. So we transferred some funds for funding of our ERP system, and then we also provided funding for planned funding for PROACT to be housed out at the Southwest Metro Intermediate School District. And then we also had our last annual payment to PROACT for the staffing subsidy that we Planning and Resource Management is showing a 400, or had a $456,000 favorable variance. This was primarily from the Environmental Services area, and with Environmental Services, the revenue they bring in is all restricted to their program, so the excess of the revenue in this area is restricted for this program in the future. The Sheriff's Office has a negative $429,000 variance. Again, the main driver for this area was from the Emergency 911 funds being transferred over to our capital improvement area for some system updates to their system in 2021 and 2022. And the last area is Transportation Services with a negative $328,000. There are a couple variances that are, that are causing this difference. The first one being is we did have a budgeting error with our state aid. That has been corrected in the 2023 budget, but it did cause a negative variance this year. And then the second- And then the second item is due to one of the snowiest winters that we've had, third snowiest season. We did have increased sand salt expenses related to that. I do have another slide. Our GIS area has put together a chart showing what the number of weekly snowplow callouts, and then also what the hours worked for the different snowplow callouts. One thing I'd really like to have you look at is just the month of December from the three different years. So the first year is showing the 2022-23 winter. The second row is showing the 2021-22 winter. And then the third row is showing 2020 to 2021. On the first row, if you total up all of the December hours, it comes to a total of 924 hours. For 2021-22, December totals 463 hours. And December '20 and '21, it totals 348 hours. So just from the snow events in December, we had in 2022 more than 2020 and 2021 combined in the past. So we really were hit hard with clearing snow and ice during the early part of the winter, and that did have a financial impact on us. The sand salt, we spent just over $1 million in 2022, where in 2021, we spent $612,000. In 2020, $781,000. So due to the increased snow and ice, we did have to go through more materials. And hopefully, we go back more to a normal winter in the future.
Commissioner Alrick.
Yeah, Mr. Chair, before we get too far away from the slide that was the operating results, I just had a question. You know, let's say this was end of year and we didn't have the Health and Human Services favorable, but the bottom, total operations was showed, even if it's a paper loss or variance of, let's say it showed a paper or a variance there of $2 million. You know, and you did explain that it's a paper calculation there, but would that affect our bond rating if we had a, that kind of?
In my opinion, it wouldn't, because we would be able to show that because it is a paper entry that's made, it brought our fund balance down in 2022, but that same entry reverses for 2023, and it's then shown as revenue. So we would take a $2 million loss this year in our investments, but then show a $2 million gain the following year. So in that case, I do not believe it would have an impact.
I was just curious on that.
But if it was a true operational, more than likely, it would have some impact.
Okay, all right. Thank you.
Great, thank you. Now, looking at the Scott County fund balance, this is a chart showing our fund balance history from 2009 to through 2022. And 2021 and 2022 are very similar, since it's only a $100,000 increase in the balance itself. But what you'll see is that the restricted fund balance, fund balance that has to be spent on specific programs, has decreased by 200,000, while fund balance for unrestricted purposes increased by 200,000. So a little bit of a shift overall, just a slight increase to our fund balance. Okay, from here, I'll go to the high-level first-quarter fiscal update, with it being the first quarter and a lot of journal entries that get made for year-end. We always do a real high-level review of the quarter. And things that have stood out to us at this time, the variances that we're looking at is both our building inspections revenue and the land records document recording revenue is below budget. The main driver for this are the interest rates. The interest rates are having an impact on the construction being done in the townships, and that in turn is causing a reduction in document recordings. And it's also with the higher interest rates, we're not seeing people refinancing mortgages. So we are reviewing those areas. One step that has been taken is within land records, there is a vacancy that is being held at this time. The third item listed is our investments. Again, this is from the paper entry that we will be showing 1.2 million of revenue in 2023. And in addition to that, if interest rates keep increasing, we will see additional investment earnings. Now, the areas that we are watching for movement, fuel prices, as you've probably seen or are aware of, fuel prices are lower than what they were a year ago, but they are increasing again. So we're keeping an eye on that to see what kind of an impact that may have. And then again, the interest rates. From a revenue perspective, it can be helpful to our investments, but it will have impacts to both the building inspections and land records documents. Are there any questions on the first quarter? Now we'll move into our investment review. This has been fairly similar for the last four quarters last year. Most of our investments are held in short-term investment tools. So just about 88% of our investments are held in investments of two years or less. And on the right side, 72% of our investments are held within CDs and money markets. And we are still in an inverted yield curve, so we are getting higher interest rates for short-term investment tools rather than long-term. So that's why you're really seeing our investments the way they are, both in CDs and money markets. Now, looking at the March yield curve, what I have here is it's showing what the rates were in 2013 with the blue line, and then what the interest rates were as of the end of 2022 with the gray line, and then the interest rates as of March 31st, 2023 with the black line. So at the end of the year, we already had an inverted yield curve, where the interest rates short-term are higher than the interest rates long-term. What has occurred in the past, over the three months, is in March, the short-term interest rates actually increased, and the longer-term interest rates decreased further. So it is a more inverted yield curve, and that's usually a poor sign for the future economy, so. Now, looking at our historical six-month treasuries, since December of 2022, it's been a little bit volatile, but the six-month rate stayed relatively the same. Shorter term had increased, six months increased a little, but just slightly. And then looking at the 10-year term, those interest rates were volatile also, but they actually decreased from the year-end rate. And now they're down to right around 3.5% for an investment. With that, I stand for, any questions from the board?
Any questions or comments? If we could get those red numbers out, you know, understand the one, but.
Hi, Ron.
They're working.
I know. Okay.
I think, though, Commissioner, the attorneys will change around. The agreement goes into effect the second year of that, so I think that's a big part of that. You know, highway has, besides the snow and ice issue, their revenues are down from state aid. We still have not gotten back to the 2020 point, you know, from the fuel tax, the vehicle sales tax and those things. And so, you know, that one, and the sheriff, again, we had that transfer, and I think also the overtime plays some into that as well in the sheriff's office. So as that starts to switch over to, that should be helpful. So I think there's some things on the right trends there.
But there'll always be pluses and minuses.
You're always, in a budget of our size, gonna have pluses and minuses.
I have them at home. Right, so, okay. Any other questions? Nope. Thank you very much. With that, we're going to move on to committee reports and commissioner updates, and we'll start with Commissioner Brennan. Or maybe not.
I can start.
We'll start with Commissioner Alrick instead. Yeah, go ahead.
Most of mine's gonna be listing things I attend. There's not much commentary, except there is one that goes through most of my meetings, and that's the legislative process and where we're at. In my case, a lot of it is related to the transportation bill. And metro-wide sales tax takes $18 million out of our county. That's when it's at 3/4%. Now, it's changes, it seems like daily between half and 3/4, and some things are included, some are not, and it's really in flux. You know, there's tab fees that are supposed to go up, and there's a delivery fee that's under consideration now. The Senate recently knocked the delivery fee out, and they've gone down to 1/2%. That's what I mean, everything's in flux. But the main theme or problem I see is that the massive amount of money that's being taken out of the county from our citizens, 18 million under the 3/4, and the potential of $3 to $4 million coming back for road projects, possibly, if we're lucky, if the TAB smiles on us. You know, so those are the kind of concerns, you know, and we're in an environment here where we have a $17 billion-plus surplus. Now, most of that, $12 million, is one-time money, but five is not one-time money. And you'd think we would be able to address some of our ongoing needs with a structural $5 billion surplus that is ongoing. So it's really concerning, you know, I've been expressing that to, you know, in the suburban county meetings that I've been attending, we've been talking about that. In meetings with legislators, talking about that, at MICA, talking about that, you know. So here's my list, but again, the financial of the legislative has woven itself through most of my meetings. So on the sixth, the suburban county meeting, seventh, the Scale Executive Committee meeting, the tenth, the Suburban Transit Association, the twelfth, MICA, the thirteenth, FISH, another suburban county is meeting, and we're, it's the collar counties that are meeting, and we're discussing not only what I just mentioned, but a balance of monies in metro versus outstate. It seems like we're raising a lot of money always, and the metro that finds its way going outstate, question is, is it fair? And then also, the collar counties are also saying, hey, it also seems like Head Up and Ramsey are getting more than their fair share, and the collar counties, particularly, especially in transit, are not getting their share, but otherwise in other categories. So we, those suburban counties, and I think we've got another couple coming up, the fourteenth, Scale, seventeenth, MBT Management Committee. Now, one of my meetings with the legislature was, MBT was accused of sitting on a $25 million reserve, and they're cutting service and not have restored service, and da-da, on and on and on. Actually, the, at least according to Luther, the reserve, and I've seen the budget, you know, so at least the budget shows about $11 million reserve, which is 27%. Now, you notice the county, you know, we just saw that, I think it showed us that we have a 49% reserve. Now, our situation's different, because we get our money a couple times a year. They don't get it a couple times a year, they get it more regularly. So we have to have a larger reserve, because we go through periods where we don't get money. But anyhow, so MBT was taken in on the chin there. And then a TAB county prep meeting, they're now starting to have a, they've always had prep meetings for the TAB for city and township and special districts, you know, where they have TAB districts. They've always had a prep meeting for those folks, they just added one for the county folks, and they're encouraging alternates to attend, once a month, so alternates could be brought up to speed in case they have to come in and fill the spot. I don't remember who my alternate is now for TAB, but, is that you?
I think it's me.
Okay. It hasn't come up.
No.
Anyway, that's into my report.
Okay. Thank you. Commissioner Beer.
Well, I'm in a new phone hangover here, so I'm locked out of outlook, so I will submit my report, but I want to make a comment that I've had some ad hoc conversations, again, dovetailing on Commissioner Alrick, with some other metro-area county commissioners, and the level of disgust, which you talk about with this surplus, is ramping up, that we're contemplating raising taxes when we already have an abundance of surplus. And I understand there's the bucket situation where certain money goes into certain buckets, but it's the legislature, they can fix that, too. So I will submit my report, that's just the brief comment I wanted to make on that particular topic. Thank you.
Thank you. With that, I'm gonna go to Commissioner Brennan. Oh, I'm sorry.
April 7th, I toured the hazardous waste facility, and I saw I toured the Public Works Facility. April 10th, I had a meeting with Lisa Brodsky. April 11th, I had a meeting at the CDA, and the city of Prior Lake was in attendance to look for CDA support for the position on the henchess development in the Spring Lake Township. April 11th, I went to the Prior Lake Spring Lake Watershed District meeting. April 13th was FISH. April 14th was meeting with Leslie Vermillion. April 17th, went to the groundbreaking for the 169 pedestrian bridge in Shakopee. April 17th was a meeting with Senator Port with, about transportation. April 18th was a meeting, or that's this morning, April 18th was a meeting with Barb Doll, and I think I'm missing one. April 12th, I had a meeting with the Scott County Historical Society Board. The board is in the process of hiring an interim executive director. We've parted ways with the other one. Over the next few months, the board will be reviewing the strategic plan of the organization, as well as coming up with strategies to find additional financial support. And that's all I got.
Can I ask you one? So the Senator Port.
Yeah.
Meeting, and you talked about transportation?
Yep.
And where is she at with the whole?
We were asking for her support, and she appears to be supportive of what we are doing, and I think that was about it. She, we had seven minutes with her, so. We, yeah.
Yeah, I think Commissioner Wolf, that she understood very clearly when Commissioner Brennan, and then we chatted a little bit about the disparity between paying in and what we get back, both from a metro standpoint, but also just from the sales tax discussion on the talking points that they used, so.
Okay, all right. Thank you. Commissioner Breckie.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and just to add a little bit more to the prior comments, number one, agree, and, but I think the work, and John's really been taking the leadership, Commissioner Alrick, on the suburban counties group, that we also need to make it, you know, mitigate the damage as much as possible, you know, and I think there's maybe been some success with that working together, where hopefully, some money coming through, instead of going, you know, through met council, come directly to counties. Hopefully, some success on looking on some policies that really would make it more difficult and costly to build interchanges, you know. So, again, I don't think we're gonna have, we're gonna solve it all, but hopefully, we're making some incremental progress with this work and working together. So I'd say that, and then number two, I think we all received an email this morning from AMC about really asking the counties to contact their legislators about both transportation funding and the community corrections funding, that they need to continue to hear from us. And I think, I thank Commissioner Brennan for meeting with Senator Port. I think it's especially important for us to be communicating with the folks who maybe we don't personally the folks who maybe we don't personally communicate with as often. I think sometimes we see some of our same legislators really often, and we gotta remember, we, we have a, a large delegation now with redistricting. And if we can all, you know, make an effort to communicate with maybe the people that we don't see as much, maybe they're not, you know, really from our districts, but we do have some legislators who are in the majority and have some real power here, and they really need to hear from us. We're their constituents. So that's, that would be my ask of, of all of us, including me. So my report, Tuesday, April 4th, workshop after board meeting. Wednesday, April 5th, Leslie and I had breakfast with Connie Haseebdom and Margaret Donahue from the Minnesota Transportation Alliance. You might recall that at the end of last year, we decided we weren't gonna be part of that anymore. They really would like us to. Leslie and I talked, you know, especially with this work we're doing, they're, they're doing a lot of the same things we're trying to do with transportation bills now. So I think Leslie's gonna talk to all of you individually about, about that. But that was just a meeting to, to chat. Thursday, April 6th, suburban counties meeting, I attended that one virtually. Friday, April 7th, Scale Executive Meeting. On Monday, April 10th, I attended two meetings with CDA representatives in Scott County, one with the Jordan City Administrator, and one with the New Prague Economic Development Director. The CDA has been doing annually dozens of these visits with our cities, and this year I suggested that someone from Health and Human Services, specifically Workforce, attend. So Carrie We Met attended one, a couple, and Barb's Dolls attended a couple. I think just good to be making those connections. So if you're interested in doing that with the cities in your district, talk, talk with Barb or Joe Faust to, to see if you can join in. Tuesday, April 11th, Law Library Board Meeting. Really a lot going on with the Law Library, but one thing I wanted to point out, Ally McNeil, she's just doing a tremendous job with, with programming and clinics. She is working with MACV, Minnesota Veterans Association, for a program on June 1 from 10:00 AM to 1:00 PM, really to provide a lot of different services to our Scott County veterans. So just wanted to let you know that. April 11th, also had my quarterly meeting with the Belle Plaine Mayor and City Administrator and County Administrator. Of course, the Belle Plaine Downtown Project, a huge, you know, probably once in a century project is, is kicking off this summer. Really big deal, expensive, but important. Not just streets, but sewer and all kinds of infrastructure there. Tuesday, April 11th, also my monthly meeting with the County Administrator. That evening was the CAP Agency Board of Directors meeting and the annual Head Start Training. Wednesday, April 12th, MICA Board Meeting, really just legislative updates. Thursday, April 13th, was the CDA Scott County meeting with the Belle Plaine Economic Development Director. Thursday, April 13th, was also the quarterly meeting that Leslie and I had, and Commissioner Beer was there, Shakopee Mayor and City Administrator. Big topics tended to be, I, I think the RTF was probably the thing we talked about most, but it was a positive meeting. Let's put that on the record. Friday, April 14th, Scale Monthly Membership Meeting. Great to see our Family Resource Centers and, and the work a lot around truancy and educational neglect highlighted. Monday, April 17th, yesterday morning, I also attended the pedestrian bridge groundbreaking in Shakopee for the new bridge over 169. It was warm. No, it wasn't. Also, yesterday afternoon, actually, I didn't, actually, I arrived in the afternoon, but four hours later, at about 6:20 PM, I actually testified at the Senate Transportation Committee on the funding for 169, 282, and 9. So as much as I love all our friends there, and, and this, you know, it's, it's good, it's what we have. Sitting around for four and a half hours at a hearing to wait to testify for one minute, left a, a little to be desired. And then this morning, had the monthly meeting with Barb Doll and Michelle. I have the wrong date on that on my written report, so thank you.
Thank you. So did you get one minute or two minutes in yesterday?
I got one minute. Me, Mike Franklin, and Senator Pratt shared three minutes.
Okay.
But we, we did well.
Okay. Good, 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 good. Okay, thank you, Commissioner Brecky. My report, New Market Township, met on the 4th of April. Lots of folks there concerned about the water bottling plant in Elko New Market, and expressed their concerns, which they were heard. Credit River on the 10th had, out at the Legends, they're looking for a new administrator. Mark McNeil is going to be stepping away from that because they're getting bigger. And actually, there's three pretty good candidates that they have there. That evening, planning and zoning, there was four items on the agenda. A couple of them went pretty long, one of them really long, but that, the one between the Prior Lake and Spring Lake Township and the intersection there of 282 and 13 and 17, you know, and maybe doing some commercial there, has, you know, I think gotten me an extra 30-plus phone calls and, you know, many meetings and emails. I'm sure some of you guys have received some of those. So I think as we get closer to the 2nd of May, I think there may be more. So anyhow. Then I met with the Elko New Market Mayor on the 12th, the MESB also on the 12th, I-35 on the 35, on the 13th, the I-35 Solutions. One big thing, they had a big presentation about busing, and their busing numbers are down over 50% from 2019 before the pandemic. There's a lot of people working at home, a lot of people don't trust the buses, a lot of people don't want to go downtown anymore. So they just said it's, it's a tough thing, but, and I don't know if they've really done anything on their side to, you know, like downsize or whatever to, you know, compensate for that. But I think if it was a business, I think they'd probably have done that. But then Elko New Market that evening, actually, was going out of town, so I took that meeting on Zoom, and they took up the water plant again. They had taken that up earlier and they kind of tabled it. But this time, they did okay the, the group from Niagara to do site preparation and the grading for that possibility that there would be a water plant, if they get the appropriation from the DNR for water. So that's what it's all hinging on at this point, in my opinion. And then on 14th, the Scale, and then the 17th, the pedestrian bridge, the groundbreaking. Then Prior Lake had a workshop, they talked about the budget and parks, and how they're gonna fund parks, and they haven't done any major planning or funding for the parks there in, in many years. And so they're putting, I don't know if it's a million into the ponds, into some new playground equipment, and redoing some fields and some other things there. So it's, and that's a great park. My kids all went through and played there. So it's something, and maybe yours, too. So anyhow, then also, Credit River met last night. They just had a short meeting, and then after that, they had a kind of a workshop, and they're talking about some new policies and things going on with some development there. So that is my report. Oh, Commissioner Olrich.
I forgot, on the 14th, I attended the RTF.
Oh, sure.
Board meeting. And I, I probably said this before, the, the direction of the RTF right now is to make it as vibrant an operation as it can be currently. And the bonds, everybody has bond, the bonds we have to pay till 2027. So when we say currently, make it vibrant, we're talking about now till 2027. Then spend as little as possible on the building is the next principle that they are guided by. And then the third is begin planning for a new training center. And that, we're exploring on the site. So the question would be, could the building be torn down, and, and what it would cost to tear down, what it would cost to build a, a facility. And so eventually, you know, we're gonna have a task of pulling together people to come up with a concept plan and, which would create a vision for the future. And, and then we will have to figure out steps to, to get there, and probably, I'm sure, and ask with the legislature and so forth. And so the meeting that we had on the 14th was, what have those general, general principles been? So that we, we went a little more in-depth in what were some of the immediate expenditures that needed to be made to keep it vibrant, but not put stuff into the building and, and like that. And so Chris Myers, the new director, and made a presentation there on, on, on those kind of expenditures. And I mean, one, for example, was new scheduling software, you know, that would make it more friendly to those that wanted to book in the training center, even make it easier, make them able to see where the openings are. That's just one little piece, and that was a small one. But that's the kind of thing, how can we make it vibrant? That's into my report.
Okay. But they're, so they're moving towards basing that building out and building a new one, is that?
Well, that's been looked at, that'd be looked at. And, you know, is, some would be critical of that location, you know, it's too far from wherever. But I asked the group, I said, who wants a 200-yard range, open-air range in your city or township or community? It's a perfect location.
Yeah.
And so, you know, and that building really is, is, is really not.
Okay.
Looking at that, what to do with the building. Yep.
Yeah. Okay. Good deal. Thank you. County Administrator update.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just one real quick update. I think the Cedar Lake Park, we heard back from Cedar Lake on not wanting to grant a permit off their road. Last night, we worked quite late on some alternatives, and I think Highway has one that includes a roundabout that would provide some safety improvements and allow us then, under our police powers for safety, to do that. So we're gonna move ahead with that. It'll alter the construction project a little bit, and probably won't have a permanent access till sometime next year, but we will be working through that and bring that back to you here. That's an update on that project. And then just quickly, we have the work sessions following on housing, the Soil Water Conservation District ultimate agreement that we're working towards, and then our new commissioner orientation, so.
Okay. Thank you. Attorney-client privilege, do we need to meet?
Mr. Chair, we do not.
We don't? Okay. And as our administrative stated, we are going to go into a workshop after this. With that, is there a motion to adjourn?
No.
This motion, is there a second?
Second.
And there's a second. If you all want to stay. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye? Posed? We are adjourned.